Good evening. I'd like to welcome you here this evening for tonight's city council meeting. We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting. And before we do, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Randall Harriman will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you've given to our city, Lord, and pray that you'll be with us as leadership tonight and the decisions we make, and hope those to be good on your side and what's best for the community, Lord. We love you, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Randall. All right. I will again welcome everyone to tonight's regular city council meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, August 8, 2023, and we will begin the, I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Good to have everybody back. I know summer travels have hit us a little bit, but appreciate everybody's participation as much as possible through those lean meetings, and good to have everybody back tonight. Item four, comments from citizens. We have a portion of our agenda each meeting that the council sets aside for comments from our Springdale residents. If there are anyone, if there's anyone that would like to address the city council, please go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that the council won't take action tonight on whatever, whatever you bring forward. So I see David up there already, and if anyone else, just get in line after David. David, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is David Gilbert. I live at 5714 Walden Street, and although my mailing address is Lowell, I do very much live within the city limits of Springdale. I'm here to talk to you tonight, once again, about Apple Blossom Road, specifically as it relates to the I-49 industrial park. I have learned that a deal has been struck whereby the warehouse will obtain a temporary certificate of occupancy before the completion of Dixieland Road. Specifically, I'm told that the trucks will access Dixieland Road to get to Apple Blossom and then use Apple Blossom to get out from there. I've been telling you for 13 or 14 years now that Apple Blossom is not sufficient to handle warehouse traffic. I've been in the road business since 1981. I've been a licensed professional engineer in Arkansas since 1994. I know a little bit about roads. I know from observation when I can see that a road is failing. When it begins to rut, when the surface begins to crack, is an indication that the structure underneath the roadway has been damaged and the roadway is failing. I have spoken to you about this before. At one point, I was told, well, we're all aboard on fixing it, but we can't get the city of Lowell to get off the stump and do anything about it. The Apple Blossom is half in Springdale and half in Lowell. So I went to the city of Lowell, and they said, well, we're all on board for fixing it, but we can't get Springdale to do anything. So what we have here is a really neat situation where y'all can blame Lowell, and Lowell can point the finger at you. And in the meantime, I'm very near having to access my house living off a dirt road, a major collector that is completely falling apart. And now I understand a deal has been struck to put even more heavy truck traffic on that road. I urge you, please, 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 do something about Apple Blossom Road. We were told in council chambers that, well, it'll be put on the next street bond program. Then I was told by a member of staff that, well, it was on the list, but it got cut because it's not important enough to do. That's kind of hard for us to take. Anybody down here, come to my house, we'll get in my car, I will make you fasten your seatbelt, and then we'll drive down Apple Blossom and we'll see how you would like it in front of your house. Please don't keep blaming somebody else. Please do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I can tell you this, the city of Springdale will not be waiting, or the city of Lowell will not be waiting on the city of Springdale to fix Apple Blossom.
Mr. Sprouse, we know each other fairly well, and I know you believe what you say. But I've also known people in Lowell a long time, and they tell me they're willing to go, that Springdale won't work, won't do anything. So I, I don't know.
We'll get answers to that.
Okay. I don't know. You put yourself in my spot.
Right.
I go to both places, and both of you tell me it's the other one's fault. To me, it begins to look like perhaps you both agreed that nothing needs to be done, and so you'll just blame each other, and then nothing has to be done.
I can assure you, that's not the case.
I'd rather not think that.
That's not the case.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, David.
If, council, I know we don't take action on anything, but I know questions came up about Apple Blossom when, when Ben presented the list, and, and, and we agreed why it may not be ready, but it may be ready. You know, we can adjust the list as we go. And so if, if we, in working with the city of Lowell, if we find out, and the needs there, then, then we can certainly adjust that list if y'all want to. So just, we'll, Ben and I'll have more conversations. It sounds like we'll be having some conversations with the city of Lowell as well. So, thank you. Item, anyone else? Okay. Item five, approval of minutes.
Counsel, you've had an opportunity to look them over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes. Any other comment or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, for both A and B. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Carrier's eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, planning commissioner report and recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a replat, I mean, a new subdivision coming into Springdale called Spring Creek Farms Phase One. This is the final plat for that first phase. Planning Commission reviewed this, requests and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance, recent ordinance, accepting a new addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, to be known as Spring Creek Farms Phase One, a subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance to be adopted. Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
About the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
Again, emergency clauses are included because there's pending action on these subdivisions. The second one is kind of a unique situation. We, we approved a replat to lot two, blocks three and seven of Zachary addition, went through council, got approved. This is what it was previously. After it'd already been approved by the council, the water department determined they needed to have a easement included on the plat. So we had to come back and repeal the previous ordinance and do a new one so that everything is correct when it gets filed at the county clerk's office. Planning Commission recommends approval of this ordinance, the title of the ordinance, recent ordinance to replace ordinance number 5827, accepting the replat of block two, lot three and seven of Zachary addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Water Service Commission still have the easement?
They have, they have the easement. It will be done with this plat. Rather than doing it as a second, separate document, it all gets in one place, and it's easier to track like this.
Other questions, comments? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carrier's eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, planning commission report and recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a replat, I mean, a new subdivision coming into Springdale called Spring Creek Farms Phase One. This is the final plat for that first phase. Planning Commission reviewed this, requests and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance, recent ordinance, accepting a new addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, to be known as Spring Creek Farms Phase One, a subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Water Service Commission still have the easement?
They have, they have the easement. It will be done with this plat. Rather than doing it as a second, separate document, it all gets in one place, and it's easier to track like this.
Other questions, comments? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Carrier's eight zero.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for Dean's Trail Phase Three A. This was again forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval, and we have not been, but Ryan here, right here, and he's going to tell us a little bit about this.
So a few weeks ago, we opened bids for the Dean's Trail Phase Three A project. Emery Sapp &amp; Sons was the lowest bidder at 5.4 million. Our engineer's estimate for the job was a little under 5.7 million. Upon discussing this with other departments, there are applicable funds in our street fund to take over this job, and I'll let Colby elaborate further if y'all want.
I can elaborate if you've got any questions about it.
Is that what you called?
Well, I know at the committee meeting, it was asked how we're going to pay for this trail, the 5.4 million. We budgeted 1.4 million in our street fund for this trail, and we know that, we've also got many grants that are applicable to this. In total grant funding, we have 1.84 million dollars in grants, and then we have the 1.4 million dollars that we've budgeted out of our street fund. We don't think that all the construction bills will come in this year, and so what we'll need to do in next year's budget is budget three, 2.34 million dollars for trails. Or you also have the option as council to pay for it out of the unrestricted street fund, which right now, we're at about, Cody said eight million. So we can, we can either budget it out of that general fund next year, whenever we come to pay for those bills, or we can put it in our budget.
Okay. So we've got an eight million, approximately eight million dollars of street fund money, apart from all over the unreserved general fund or anything else. Another eight million of state turnback that's been budgeted over the year, or it's been, it's built up, basically.
Yeah. We have eight million dollars in there. The beginning balance and the year end balance are going to wash. So we're not dipping into that excess fund there, so you can always pull it out of that.
Right.
But that was the latest number that Cody gave me.
1.45 is already earmarked out of the.
1.4.
1.4 million.
It's already earmarked out of the street, street funds, correct?
That's correct.
That's state turnback money.
Yes, street fund.
And, and, and you're suggesting that we'll have roughly the same amount of money from grants, a little bit more, maybe?
You're, you're going to have in total grants with our 20% match, 1.84 million. That'll go towards that project. Now, we'll reduce our 20% match out of the 1.4 that we budgeted.
Okay. And, and then we may not spend the entire 5.4 this year.
Right.
So we would have to earmark some additional monies from somewhere in the budget next year.
Out of the street fund. We will.
It would be out of the street fund?
Yes. The next, we'll, if, if the bills come in this year, we'll spend the remaining balance of what we budgeted minus the 20% match. I don't know that all that would even come in. It's not likely. But next year, we'll pay for the balance. Either we can budget for it in our trails budget, or we can pay for it out of the unrestricted street fund balance.
And Cody, our, the street, the street fund does come out of our turnback funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So you're limited. I mean, it's, we can't just spend it on anything.
Right. We, we budget several things. You know, we entered into an agreement with the railroad this, for 3 million dollars. We started budgeting 500,000 out of that last year. We do our overlay. We budget that out of it. Salaries for our employees that work for streets, we're allowed to use that with turnback funds. So what we, our beginning balance on January 1st will be about the same as our ending balance after we've budgeted money. So we've got about eight million dollars to spend out of there. We, we, talking with Ben from engineering, we really don't want to use the, the bond project money on this if we don't have to. We'd rather focus on the street projects that we have. But that's why we do have the street funds available.
We don't have a designated fund for sidewalks, correct?
So it's, it's similar to our general fund. We, we can budget, like we budgeted 1.4 million, but what's not spent out of our budget goes back into our unrestricted general fund every year. So last year, we had an eight million dollar surplus that ended back up into our unrestricted fund. Same thing with street fund. What's not spent goes right back in to build that budget.
But we don't, we don't designate any of the street fund for sidewalks, is that correct?
We did 1.4 million this year.
For sidewalks?
Sidewalks and trails.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about trails.
Sidewalks and trails.
No, we have money set aside for sidewalks. That's in our budget as well.
That's not in the street fund, though, correct?
Yes, it is in the street fund.
There is, sidewalks are ineligible street fund expenditure.
And, and we have a separate designated amount for sidewalks, separate from the trail?
Yes. We've got trails, sidewalk money, and we also have overlay money. Those are your, those are three of the distinct.
But it doesn't, it doesn't carry over.
It does not. So it doesn't build up.
It has to be budgeted every year.
That's right.
And do we use that, that fund?
Anything out of the street or sidewalks that go to, we've been, it's been devoted to trails. That's why it's, in the past, we'd done more sidewalks, but we've been devoting more money to the trails, hell of the sidewalk designation.
I would say that opposite. I mean, I mean, what I'd say is, we've been, we've had more trails projects come to us.
I know.
But the money could be spent either way.
Either out of sidewalks or trails. What I'm saying is that when you spend a, a dollar for trails, that's a dollar unless you're going to spend on sidewalks if we've got older sidewalks.
Well, I've, I've, I've encouraged our active transportation members, committee members, to bring us some sidewalk projects.
Have, have we, have we spent any of that fund on the sidewalks?
Yeah. There was a project that, that we just, I can't even remember the, the street that we just repaired the sidewalk on, where the developer, he had stopped the project where he was supposed to, and we carried it on. We have several little projects that come up.
And that's paid out of that fund?
That's right. But we can adjust that in, in budget time, or even throughout the year if we want to amend the budget. But during budget time, we can put, just like this year, we suggested, let's look at doing more towards overlay.
Right.
We'll do whatever, you know, the will of the council is with the budget.
Yeah. We went from one to two million.
Yeah.
On overlay this year.
Is there a way to get some sort of list, priority list on those kind of projects throughout the city? Sidewalk projects?
Well, he's asked for more, for a list of them, and hadn't received any. So apparently we don't have that many that have come to everybody's attention.
Right. We, honestly.
They just kind of come up from time to time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they come. Throw a dart at a dartboard.
Several, the older areas.
Find a lot of area.
So we just take care of it as it comes, and there's nothing that's just waiting.
Right. I would say that's accurate.
And these older sidewalks are a lot smaller than our newer ones.
Right. And you've got issues that, you've got, you've got utility issues and, right, some things that can get pretty complicated and expensive for a short piece of sidewalk, especially in an older, you know, we, new, when we do road projects, it's a no-brainer. But going back and putting sidewalks in some of these older areas is, it gets, it gets pretty pricey real quick, and you may have, you may have residents along those areas that don't want a sidewalk. And then you're, you're into a hag, haggling about right away for, if, if it's outside of your, right away, you've already got.
I would, I would think that anything surrounding a school would be something to look at. Make sure that there's appropriate sidewalks that go to all of our schools.
Patsy, can you, I hate to put you on the spot. These conversations sometimes go places we don't know they're going to go. But to Amelia's point, I know active transportation does, y'all have been looking at, especially around schools. Can you just give us, you were Ben, just kind of give us an update?
She might still need to update. So I just wanted to call to your attention, we do have a half million dollars in the bond program that we've set aside to do sidewalks around schools. I mean, that is specifically what it's for, starting with the elementary schools, and for a run out of money, we'll move up in age groups. But, so there is, that is a plan to do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
So we have two funds for sidewalks. Bond fund and a street fund.
Currently, you're, that's correct.
And I'll, I'll say this, the bond program is, is really more dedicated to new sidewalk areas, typically around the schools. What we budget is usually more repair work. So I know the other day, we got a, a call from Mary McKinney, who had an issue over here on a sidewalk that she tripped on. James and his team that day went out. They used the money that they budgeted for, and we make a lot of repairs that way. So there's a lot that's going on with sidewalks. It's just not the new development of sidewalks. That's more for the bond fund.
Motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any more questions?
I've already forgot what the resolution was, man.
Dean's Trail.
Would you like me to read it again, Jeff?
No.
Okay. We're good.
Roll call, please.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Harryman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Carrier's eight zero.
And that closes finance committee.
Thank you. Amelia, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Last committee meeting, we had one item come before us, and basically it's taken money from insurance recovery count and moving it to do some repair work for police cars. I'll read the title of the resolution. It was forwarded with recommendation for approval. A resolution amending the 2023 budget of the city of Springdale Police Department. Chief's here if you've got any questions.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay. We've got a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Question for the chief? Anyone? All right. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugeroos.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carrier's eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Item 10, ordinance committee chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
We had one, one item on the ordinance committee that came forward. It's a ordinance amending chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency, and it came forward with no recommendation.
This has to do with the, yeah, go ahead, ordinance, the airport?
This is something that the Airport Commission has been wanting for some time. It helps streamline the, the process for hangar development, and also puts design standards on the air, hangars that are on the airport property. And like I said, this is something they've been studying, and Airport Commission unanimously recommended it to the council for consideration.
Just for clarification, because the, some of the, some things that were brought up in discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you mentioned streamlining. This actually, I mean, right now, if, if someone's building a hangar, they've got to get variances for several things that don't really apply well to hangars.
Correct.
And so this tailors the design standards to what would be more, more appropriate for airport and, and hangar construction.
Correct. And, and the best example I can give is perimeter landscaping. You know, you don't want a lot of intensive landscaping around an airport because it attracts birds. But, but we found that there's been a lot of variances that have been requested for commercial design standards involving hangars, which got us thinking, well, maybe we need to have a different set of rules, not a lack, not a laxer set of rules, but like you said, a more appropriate set of standards for hangars.
I did visit with a couple of airport commissioners after our meeting the other night, and both of them expressed that they do get a lot of stuff that comes before them, that this would certainly help and clean up a lot. So with that, I'll move the ordinance forward.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
On page 54, it talks about exterior materials, and it says it still must meet Springdale's commercial design standards. I thought we were taking that language out of it.
We're not replacing the entire design standards. We're just tailoring those to be more appropriate for hangars. There's still some things that the design standards are still going to apply. One of the changes was perimeter landscaping is one, because you're going to have two hangars right next to each other in the midst of an airport. Doesn't make sense to do perimeter landscaping around both hangars.
But if they're on those, on those, in those areas where they still apply, the applicant still has the right to ask for, to seek a variance, just like they do now?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Ernest, emergency clause, so that if this does pass, it goes effective immediately.
Yes, and there's actually, I think, two pending developments that are kind of waiting to see what happens with this, I believe. Plus Airport Commission meets next week and they're curious to see what happens.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Ordinance Kerry six two, emergency clause Kerry's eight zero, and thank you, Mr. Lawson, for your comments.
All right, item eleven, committee of the whole, I'm not sure who took this, but Ryan's here to answer the questions. I'll go ahead and read a resolution to adopt a comprehensive safety action plan and vision zero policy. And this was forwarded with recommendation for approval. You remember who took it?
I did, and I can't remember any details.
Okay, just turn it over to Ryan.
I'm glad you were taking it.
Just to recap, the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission had Tool Design Group put together a comprehensive safety action plan for the region. And in order for Springdale to apply for any grant funding through the Safe Streets for All Program, federal program, will need to adopt the plan.
We have a motion second to approve the resolution, any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus? Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, Mike, you want to take any of these or you want me to keep going? All right, item B is a resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement agreement on property owned by the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and it was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ernest.
Thank you, this has to do with the renovations to the first security building on the Emma side and on the Greenway side as well. I believe that their, the trail's gonna be temporarily rerouted for a brief period of time and there'll be times when the Emma Avenue side will be, the sidewalk will be closed. But my understanding is that's just gonna be a brief, brief period of time and, and the developers just need permission from the city to be able to access those areas.
Do the resolution, Mr. President?
Do we have a motion second to approve the resolution, any other comments or questions?
I had had some conversations with some individuals who ride our trails and they're so impressed with the, how the trail comes through now, how downtown Emma, or how downtown looks on Emma. They knew about this and they, they asked if the trail would be open all the time. And I said, from our understanding, it's gonna be open all the time, there will not be any blockages of trail. If there are blockages, they will have people there who will guide them through there. You know, there's gonna be times where we need to stop it briefly, but it's just not gonna be just completely stopped.
Okay.
So, am I, am I stating that correctly? That's correct, it'll be a detour, well, let me, yes, there would be a detour, but the trail would not be closed for a long period of time. It may be short periods of time just to move things around, but there would be flaggers there, people there to help bicyclers go through. Is that statement correct? They did that correctly. There will be potentially four days that require us to encapsulate the fence and cause a reroute like pasty discussed on the Greenway side. And there will be a number of days where we move fence into about a third of the Greenway and keep two thirds of it open. And in any case that occurs, we will have flagmen there to, for public safety. And during all public events, our plan is to consolidate everything in our staging area and pull the fences back as far as we can. So, and have a new sidewalk.
Bottom line is, Mike, that bikers will always be able to get through either on a short detour or through a flagger, or the trail will be open. Right, okay, thank you.
So I meant to look at this again, and I didn't get a chance to, but it seemed like there was discussion last week that basically this temporary easement that was located basically where the chain link fence was, correct? Okay.
Hey, Mike, will you go to the microphone, please?
And if I'm remembering correctly, like I said, I meant to look, but if I'm remembering correctly, when I drove by last week, there were at least two or three red bud trees on the inside of the fence.
Yes, sir.
Are those trees coming down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there replacement trees in the plans?
I don't know that there are replacement trees, there is replacement landscaping. I cannot, I cannot answer without doing a little research if there are replacement trees.
Will the new landscaped area be smaller?
Yes, the new landscaped area will be smaller.
Why are we agreeing to that? I don't really understand. What I'm understanding, we're giving here is the right to come onto our property for purposes of construction. Why are we giving the right to tear down trees?
Are you getting into the?
Talk about the, I mean, the, the form-based code and what it allows as far as encroachment on our, on public elon property.
The form-based code allows an encroachment into that area for steps and overhangs and those kind of things. With that comes a relocation of that landscaping that goes along with those improvements. Where you'll have us be able to access the side of that building off of the Greenway, off of the, the public area down into the side of those buildings. Because that's what's allowed in the form-based code. Now, there was some discussion about having those trees relocated, maybe put them back in Turnbo Park somewhere or put into some other area, not just tear them up and lose them. All of it depends on what time of the year it is and when they're, if they're in their shape to be relocated and that kind of stuff. Now, I don't know.
James, did some of you guys relocate stuff already?
Yeah, they've already started relocating it.
Relocated a lot of the landscaping.
Yeah, and it's, well, you relocate trees at certain amount of times, you don't just go jerk them up just anywhere.
And sometimes trees are too big to relocate.
Yeah, sometimes that happens, yeah, yeah. But we're gonna have an active area on that side of the building into the Greenway area and that whole shallow square, Walter Turnbo Park, which was something we've been working on for quite some time, to open that areas to be more active to the street and to the trail that comes through there. And we're giving up, it's.
Ten feet?
Yeah, it's just ten feet into that area, that's what it is, so that they can have steps and access into those areas. I have copies of the plans in my office if you want to see them.
Patsy, I also have a question and you may or may not be able to answer, but all of that behind those, the Hundred West Emma, behind Shelby Lands, all of that is business use, it's city-owned, but they use that as a loading and loading zone. That's, that's still planning, I mean, because they came to me and I came to you guys and you guys said you're good.
There is, there is an alleyway in there that exists, and that alleyway's not going away. In fact, they're actually looking at expanding the alleyway further to the north so there'll be more space in there and actually have some loading areas and things that's gonna be better when we get finished. The developers are meeting with the property owners Thursday night to go over all of those details on how all that's gonna work, but the alleyway that belongs to the city is not going away.
Well, I do know that several business owners could not attend the meeting until after six P M., so maybe if we could push that a little bit later?
Okay, we'll let the developers know they need to think about after six o'clock, they're saying yes, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
To answer, to follow back up with you, we are planting two new red bud trees. So if you picture, the glass wall is the turnbowl side of the building. The sidewalk gets raised up and leveled, and so there will be steps that go up to that sidewalk. In between sets of steps is a plant, landscape planter. There are three of those landscape planters along the Greenway that replace that landscaping that was there. So we are replacing two red bud trees, a witch hazel, some day lilies and some sweet spire. And all of that is irrigated, the, I don't think, the trees are not irrigated now, just the beds are, but all of that will be irrigated. So it should be, I would consider it to be pretty close to comparable. Now, that was a pretty big bed that we, that's coming out, but all of those plants are being relocated and we've been in coordination with the city on that to make sure that all of that survives. Those red buds, we certainly would not want to transplant those today. But I'm happy to coordinate with the city and see if we can salvage those and relocate those somewhere else as well.
And so this, these steps that go out from the building, that's part of the, of what is allowed by the form-based.
That's in form-based, it's part of the encroachment.
How close do they come to the trail? Have to be ten feet from the edge of the trail?
Okay, any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, item eleven C, a resolution to revise the floodplain damage prevention code for Springdale in order to mitigate flood-related risk to mechanical and electrical equipment. This was also forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. And I'm gonna ask Katie Hollingshead to come and answer any questions.
Sure, yeah, this is a small revision to our flood code that requires mechanical and electrical equipment to be elevated to the same standard as the finished floor elevation for homes in the floodplain.
Got a motion second to approve the resolution, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Harriman? Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Kerry's eight zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, item twelve and thirteen, I'm gonna turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. Item twelve is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to draw a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. It's three parcels in Thornberry subdivision.
The ordinance passed.
Got a motion second to approve the ordinance, any other comments, questions? Anyone here to speak on this property? Okay, roll call.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fuggerus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, first, emergency clause Kerry eight zero. The last item is an ordinance vacating a portion of a dedicated public street known as Putman Street pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash three oh one dash three oh one, declaring emergency for other purposes. This was tabled from the last council meeting as they were still needing to get the remaining signatures needed, which they have provided. So it is ready for council action. This was, just, just a way reminder, you had previously vacated a portion of Putman Street and this would vacate the remainder south to Price, I believe, by street for a pending development.
The ordinance passed. Second.
Motion second to approve the ordinance, other questions or comments? Anyone? Roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause Kerry eight zero.
All right, thank you, item fourteen, any comments from council?
I did have a question on, on twelve, I couldn't get a microphone, but have we got ahold of them? That couple that lives in Thornberry, we got?
We're, these are, Ron could testify to this, that we did provide them with notice. We did get signed green cards back, they are aware. I believe we have some other parcels that either they or the LLC own that we're dealing with as well besides these three.
That's correct, I always work hard to try to contact these people. I reached out via email, text, and no response. So, and these are complaints that come from the, both houses on, on either side of these lots.
Right.
So, yes, we always work extremely hard, try to contact these people before we, we go in to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I did have another gentleman ask me about the mowing around our trails and that sometimes that as they're mowing, they're not blowing off the trails and he encountered some slick spots. Are they, is that a public work, is that?
That'd be parks and rec.
Parks and rec.
We can, we can address that, I don't think Chad's here tonight, I didn't see him. Okay, we'll address that, thank you, Brian, did he say a particular part of the trail or?
He may have.
Okay.
I don't remember, but he was just saying.
I've always seen him blowing them off, but I, maybe, maybe they missed something.
He's very new, he's very new to bicycling and he just ate up with it.
Okay.
And he said he did come around the corner and it was a little bit slick and it was grass thrown out there, so.
Okay, all right, well, we'll try and, we'll make sure we're aware of that, thank you. Anybody else? City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Nothing from me, whoa, 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 one thing, before I get that, before I get that so moved, I didn't hear it. I know you will. You guys have, you have all gotten your lanyards with fobs and we will send out something tomorrow with a map to show you which doors and how that'll work. Now, keep in mind, next, next meeting will still be in here, next council meeting. But, but you can start using those whenever you want, but we'll, we'll send you something tomorrow to make sure, you know, make sure we got them programmed right and you know where all you can access to get in, okay? That's all I got. And we had a motion to adjourn, we're adjourned, thank you all.